Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's work session for September twenty, or September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, getting ahead of myself. Three items for discussion this evening, ownership request from Northwestern Montana History Museum for central school property, third-party ambulance billing and city manager recruitment item. Can I have a roll call to start?
Counselor Nunley?
Hi.
Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Here.
Counselor Graham?
Here.
Counselor Dowd?
Here.
Counselor Dolman?
Here.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
First item this evening is the ownership request from Northwest Montana History Museum. Mr. Nigron, do you wanna?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you recall, we had a council meeting on July twenty-eighth regarding this item. To give a little history, the museum did send a letter to the council from the board, a unanimous letter, I should say, from the board, requesting a potential property transfer to the city, or from the city to the board for the Northwest Montana History Museum. Currently, there's a lease on the property with the museum. With that lease, they're responsible for the maintenance of the building itself, and it's been that way since nineteen ninety-seven. At the discussion, there was, you know, seemed to be some favor towards potential property transfer, but there was some questions just in regard to the, the property itself, the parking, the open space on the south end of the, the building there, some potential reversionary clause provisions and how a loan would potentially impact the City of Kalispell in the future. Regarding parking, and I have had these conversations with, with the board, they would have no issue splitting the parking lot off and, and staff would recommend that, that if this were to move forward, we would do that. For the simple reason, it would still be a city parking lot, the museum would still have access to that parking lot. But the city does sell permits in that lot, a number of downtown business owners have parking in there, High Country Lining has parking in there, the City of Kalispell has a number of employees that park in there. So there's over fifty permits issued and obviously if the, the city were to lose that, there'd be a number of businesses impacted by that decision. So any potential transfer would need to have that property split off, which we could do that relatively easy. The open space, we did have conversations and there didn't seem to be any issue with the board if, if they did maintain ownership of the, the entire property, but they would look at doing some sort of restriction on the open space that would continue to be open to the public. It is some of the only green space downtown, it functions as a quasi-park for a lot of business owners downtown and just general patrons of downtown, there's a number of events held there, so they would continue to be open to holding events in the space as well as continuing to maintain that. Have no intentions of doing anything with it other than having it remain open space at this time. And if, in, if in the future there ever was some sort of expansion or something in, in that area, open to like a future council decision in that regard. See, a loan on the property, certainly a potential loan would affect the city in the sense if it were to revert back. However, I think the board is also here to discuss what a potential loan would look like. I don't think there's, it's gonna be a multimillion dollar loan or anything in that regards that would really be a potential issue in the future. They are a nonprofit, their funding is limited, so any loan, there's a number of ways the city could handle it. You know, they could just, you know, trust that it's gonna be limited, which I think that they'll, they'll talk to, because they are really just looking at doing maintenance to the building. Obviously, any maintenance to the building if, if the museum were to say not want to be there anymore, that would fall on the city regardless. So they're just looking at taking ownership to allow or to continue to do maintenance, get some additional grants, some foundation money and et cetera to do that. The city could also maybe look at putting a cap on a loan, loan to value, something along those lines if, if you chose to do that. And other than that, you know, they really wouldn't change a whole lot, other than the ownership would have changed, allowing them to provide for just the ownership, be able to get loans, provide for maintenance. But any reversionary clause could be a change of use, it could revert back to the city, so it's not like they would automatically have the ability to just sell the property, right? They, it, it would be for a museum and for museum purposes, and that's really the only means that the city would be able to transfer the property anyways. State law does allow the city to transfer the property to a nonprofit if it's a historical building, which this is the case. So in that regard, really, if, if anything were to change, it could revert back to the city. In the meantime, it gives the, the museum board an, an ability to take care of some deferred maintenance and happy to continue the discussion, the board is here, and go from there. Thank you.
Thoughts, discussion? It seemed like last time we were, there was, there was a lane towards allowing this to move forward. But just some of these, some of these issues, I guess one quick question, it's on the historical register, correct?
Correct.
And so if it did revert back to us, we're, it's not like we can raise it and, I mean, not that we would, but we're restricted on what we could do with it as well.
Well, not necessarily, if, I mean, it depends on what kind of loans. Oftentimes, if you've taken some historical grant monies to do that, then that can potentially restrict the property. I'm not aware of any of that that would restrict it. Certainly, there's a social benefit to having historic buildings and that, everything that goes along with that. So I, I wouldn't recommend the city would do anything other than keeping it as it is, but it does create those challenges as far as maintenance. As, as you see in the list they provided, there's a number of outstanding maintenance items that would need to be taken care of in the future. But no, I don't believe city could do with it what they wanted, but you know, it would be dependent on any past grants or anything that would potentially restrict that.
But we could issue a restricted deed that restricts it to this usage?
Yes, you could.
Thank you, Your Honor.
That would, sorry, that would be the recommendation, that it would be for the museum and museum purposes, because that was what it was for originally to begin with.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify on the parking. It's just that north parking lot, it's not the parking in front of the, uh, museum?
No, the parking in the museum, museums act, sorry, the parking in front of the museum on the east-hand side is actually in the city right of way.
Okay.
So this would include the parking lot, and there is a number of spots along the alleyway on the west side, it would include those as well.
That would then become permit?
Say that again?
Would be permit, or they would be, they would go over to the museum?
No, they're already permit, they would maintain, they'd be maintained as permit, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just piggyback on the historic structure conversation. My understanding is the state rules aren't, there's nothing really there, so it would make sense that in the restrictions, maybe we add that, that no changes to kind of the historic architecture of the building without kind of prior approval or something like that from the city. But, um, the loan to value ratio, any sense as to what, what that should be, or discussions with the museum about what they would like that to be?
Certainly, it's up to the council. I think, you know, A.J. here may have a good answer of what their plans are and what something like that could be, or whether it would be necessary or not. Obviously, you know, the value of the building, you know, we don't have a recent appraisal on it. I will say, as far as insurance purposes, it's valued about five point seven million. So, you know, that gives you, I guess, somewhat of a starting point, whether it's ten percent or twenty percent or something along those lines.
Yeah, I would be inclined for that type of limitation, just to be cautious and, you know, the other restrictions we've, we've talked about. But otherwise, I'd be comfortable moving forward.
Any other thoughts on it, anyone? Carrie or? Who is, is Ms. Dolman online?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay.
Same, I think it sounds good too.
Okay. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I was gonna ask what the fair market value of, of that, the building is now. I'm sure it's way more than five point seven million unless you did the evaluation, the valuation like twenty twenty or later. And, yeah, I am definitely in favor of it being restricted to being a, a museum or historic and staying a historic building without changing the architecture of the building as well. With it going back to the city in case it stops being a museum. I, I know that there are, there's a segment of the population that's a little bit upset that we would be basically, we're not technically giving it, but it's close, right? It's, it's not gonna be fair market value transfer. So it would probably make a lot of minds a little bit easier if we could make sure that it's gonna remain that function, and if it stops being that function, it reverses back to the city.
Any other thoughts? And I'm not gonna wait till all the others, I'm gonna have, Mr. Ken, do you wanna? Give us some thoughts on what you think, A.J. and?
Yes. Well, thank you. Again, thank you for all you do. It's good to be before you again. There's, there's a couple of things here that, that goes with the parking. One thing is our handicap entrance on the north side. And so if, if the, the parking stays with the city, we want to make sure that we maintain that entrance and we have enough room to get some handicap parking in there. So if we could get that, that would definitely help us out. So if we don't have it, we got some real ADA challenges there. So that, that's the one thing. Regarding the loan, um, yeah, I'm not sure what, I agree with that value that was just thrown out here. As a lender for forty years in here, there's one thing that, you know, you got, I mean, I mean, honestly, it, it's, it's a great building. It, it means the world to me, but it's an elephant, and there's deferred maintenance to it. And so any lender in this town is, is gonna want a really low loan to value. And there's one other piece that we didn't discuss last time, is what we would require, is somebody to guarantee that loan on the board. And in doing that, I mean, you know, there's not a lot of benefit for a guarantee here. It's not like you're running a business and you guarantee it so you get to pay that debt off and own it free and clear. Basically, you're on the line, on the hook, if that museum is not run properly, you lose and, and you can lose some personal assets. So you can find to, to, to bypass any kind of loans, you can find to, to, to bypass any kind of loans. I think that's all I gotta say. So anyway, thanks again, and we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you. So general consensus, move ahead with comments? I think we talked about the handicap parking before, that would be a requirement, that those are needed there anyway.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, as part of the building, they're gonna need accessibility, and the intent for those spaces will not go away, and we can continue to work with them on the ADA basis as well.
We can designate some of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I guess one bit of maybe direction we'll need as we start to put things together is, is the council comfortable with staff potentially coming up with the loan to value ratio? And/or, you know, if the board guarantees a loan, maybe removing it, something like that? Because it sounds like, I said, they're likely trying not to get any debt, but if the board were to guarantee it alone, would that be sufficient?
What happens if the board dissolves under, I don't know the legal on all this stuff, but if a board member?
The minute you sign a guarantee, I've signed them, and you can leave, that, that guarantee sits with that bank. I've seen guarantees pulled out after someone thought they were long gone as a partner, and they didn't pull that guarantee.
So they go after the individual or the organization?
After the individual.
Okay.
Yeah, guarantee is basically a blank check, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. There's a loss in the loan. Yeah, we come marching as a bank and with our attorneys leading. It's not a fun process to be a guarantor on a loan when the loan's in default.
There's a pucker factor when you sign one.
A.J., when's your first fundraiser?
Pardon me?
When is your first fundraiser?
Well, this, we have it all the time, so if you want to start right in time.
I'm tips trained, I can be your bartender.
All right, so. So we're ready to move ahead and?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So action item? Four weeks, two weeks, four weeks?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need some time to put some things together, so. As soon as we can.
Won't be next week, just saying that.
We'll work with, we'll work with the board and get, get some language together and we'll have something before council as soon as we can.
Good. Okay. Uh, third-party ambulance billing, oh, yes.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is a pretty, pretty straightforward here. Got it on the council agenda just because it is something that kind of changes the administration over in the fire department, and it does generally affect the funding. Looking at acquiring third-party EMS billing services, currently, um, the city has seen about a ten to fifteen percent increase in calls every year. Our billing is handled by one staff person, so we're pretty susceptible to something happening. Obviously, ambulance billing is a, is a big chunk of the, the city budget, over, you know, about one point three million dollars in total. Really, what, moving towards a third-party billing, first of all, sorry, I should have introduced Kenneth Whitehair, the Assistant Fire Chief. He's here to answer some questions as well. We did provide the payer matrix of how our call breakdown is done, but really what we're looking at it doing is just trying to maximize our ambulance transport and response revenue within the framework of compliance. Looking at, currently, we get about forty percent of the billing. This would likely increase us to up over fifty percent, so any third-party, you know, will generally charge based off of the revenue collected anywhere from five to ten percent, somewhere in that range. So any, any third-party services would pay for itself and then also provide for us some redundancy if something were to happen at the staffing level. So just likely, if, if council's supporting of going towards third-party billing, we have done an RFP for services, and there is a, a number of groups or a number of businesses.
We have to put together if we choose to go this direction in order to make that streamlined without any major hiccups.
Mr. Dowd?
Uh, two questions. So the, number one, uh, do we have a guesstimate on about what this costs us for our level of ambulance service?
So I'm just basing this off of, say, a six percent number, right? So, you know, if right now we're collecting about four hundred and seventy thousand, you're looking at thirty thousand a year. If you were to increase that percentage, it more than pays for itself. You know, if you were to, say, up the collection rate up to fifty percent, you're, you're collecting six hundred and fifty thousand. I'm doing rough numbers here, like right now we're collecting, this was last year's budget, four hundred and seventy thousand. So you're upping the collection by about two hundred thousand, whereas what you would pay would be, you know, relatively minuscule for that. So if, if they were able to collect six hundred and fifty thousand, it costs would be forty.
And it takes a full-time FTE right now to handle this? So is that a, is that a, is that fire personnel, is that administrative staff, who's that?
It's administrative staff in the fire department, yes.
Okay, and they would transition to do something else?
Well, they'll, they'll continue to have this role, but, um, yeah, they'll continue to be in the fire department. Obviously, they've got, um, a lot of other administrative duties going on over there as well. So they would continue to support this full-time at this point in time, because it is still, there's a lot that goes into it and still supporting the, the fire chief and the chief and the administrative duties in the fire department.
Great, so, and just to, uh, put this in plain language, we're, we're estimating somewhere around thirty thousand a year for this service?
That'd probably be on the low end.
Okay.
Thirty to fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
It's, it's all dependent on the revenue they collect, yeah. It's one hundred dependent, it's one hundred percent dependent on the amount of revenue they can collect based off of the billing.
Okay.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you. Um, yeah, it, the, there's obviously pros, a lot of pros to this, and the fact that we're the only class-one city that doesn't do this says a lot. I guess my biggest concern is, uh, you know, my understanding is the industry is pretty unscrupulous and that, you know, they can harass people beyond reason. I've heard of double billing, overcharging, because they, you know, they're getting a percentage of what they collect, so they collect as much as possible. I don't know if there's any kind of valuation system out there of these different companies to see who the better companies are over others who maybe are engaged in more nefarious practices, a rating system or, or something like that.
Haven't gotten to that point yet, that's certainly something that any, any proposal, you'll, the council will be able to see the proposal they put together, together, and there'll be a recommendation in the future, but there are best practices that they use, but in the end, they're, they're just trying to collect on a, a service that's already been provided. So that's, that's what the goal would be, is to get paid for the service that was provided. And, and whatever means they use that, I know there is some general guidelines that they follow, and they have and or will outline that in their proposals to the city.
So the process, they're doing the collection, essentially. So we would still do the invoicing, the initial billing, give it thirty days, sixty days, and after that period, send it to them? Or what's the, what are we looking at for, we'd issue the bill and then they would start the collection process at that point?
Well, that's a good question, Your Honor. What's gonna happen is our employee right now that reviews all these forms and sends the billing out and then follows up five separate times afterwards before it kind of goes to collections, that review of the paperwork and the billing is gonna still be done by our employee, but then it's handed off in a secure manner to the third party. They handle it from there.
Okay, so once it's billed and it becomes a receivable, then?
Correct.
Got it. Yeah, and I think, you know, really kind of looking at it, the time it takes that person, as you say, five, six, seven times to follow up. You look at the payer mix, and once again, what was the number, sixty percent is Medicare, Medicaid? Seventy percent, which reimburses us at what rate?
Approximately forty.
About forty percent of what we bill.
Yeah.
So forty cents on every dollar that we bill to Medicare, Medicaid, and that's seventy percent of our volume, so there's thirty percent really we need to chase. And, and if we can skew that number a little bit better, you know, we're better off, this pays for itself. I know it's involved, hospital, we did this, and significantly improved collections. Yeah, some people didn't like it. Oh, they're calling me, well, pay the bill. Sorry, we provided the services. It's, it's, you know, this, this is life. So I'm, I'm supportive of giving it a shot.
Yeah.
Because once again, we've got other things and, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I think volume's probably increasing in the number of calls every year, right? So that means this person's busier and busier and busier every year.
I think that's the key to Sid's point as well, is yes, there's an individual doing it, but it's becoming harder because the workload is getting bigger, bigger, and it's increasing upwards of twelve percent a year. So it'll be harder to not only bill, but then to collect as, as we move forward, so.
So if we don't move forward with this, we're very soon in a situation where we're gonna see a request for half any FTE or full FTE to work through these, the collection processes. So.
And then there's the whole continuity of operations question, if this person gets sick or something happens to that person. I, I, I like this idea, so I support it.
I just want to make sure that I understand the piece that this external party is gonna be taking over. So the initial billing is still done by the department, or the initial billing is then by, done by them?
Another great question. Uh, we will review the forms for appropriate charges and then pass it off to the third party.
Okay, so we're not doing the billing piece, we're just making sure that what we forward to them is accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there kind of provision that guides, like, their, any fees that they might tack on to that billing?
If the proposals are as they propose, no, it's that flat fee, setup fee to get us going, to get us tied into their system, and then some training for our fire department staff, and that, that should be it.
But I'm, I mean, fees to the, the people that are, they're going to bill, right? The, the customer, the, that they're tacking on to our billing, extra charges for the, the person they're, they're collecting from?
That is not the way I read it in the proposals. Their bill would be the same as we would be sending them, but in lieu of our staff doing the billing and the follow-up five times over, that's where that five to six to seven percent gets paid to that third party.
I'm sorry if I missed this. Do they file the insurance then for the patient? Or, or, you know, if they're, they're doing the billing, do they file the insurance claim then also, or?
They, with their information, will go and charge Medicaid, Medicare, or the private insurer.
So the third party does that for them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, even if it's, if, if it spears a quarter FTE time, it's actually a cost benefit, so.
Yeah. Any other questions on that?
No.
Consensus to move forward, is that Ms. Dolman?
Move forward, yes.
Okay. Anything else, any comment on that one? Okay. Third item, city manager recruitment. We're not gonna recruit a city manager now? Just kidding, go.
Let's pass this one on down to Denise, the human resource director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So GMP Consultants was hired to be our executive search firm for our open city manager position. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So GMP Consultants was hired to be our executive search firm for our open city manager position. GMP, as part of the profile development, is seeking your guidance on a salary range, a starting range. And then residency requirements. So within your private packet, we provided a salary range. For your consideration that consists of data gathered across Montana cities. This range was selected to remain competitive in the process and to also allow for flexibility and growth. Um, and the flexibility being based on qualifications and experience. Also, within the packet, there is a highlighted. Conflicting language surrounding residency requirements for the city manager. If the city manager is going to be required to live within city limits, we should clearly state that within the profile development that we're posting. To allow transparency for applicants applying for the position. And then, or council may also defer. You can defer the matter and allow residency to be negotiated during contract discussions with a potential new hire.
Mr. Dowd?
I mean, we we went and, uh, you know, we were having trouble filling fire and police slots. And we did extend them out to be able to live outside of the city limits or outside of the limits that we already had set. Unfortunately, this is the one position in the city that I'm not willing to let live outside the city, because the. The management that he does is directly affecting the citizens here, and it it should affect him as him or her as well.
Disagree.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I, um, a couple thoughts. I mean, one, I generally agree with Mr. Dowd, but I think that because of the expense of. Housing and difficulty of moving here, uh, that we witnessed with our hiring, that having a grace period. Of twelve to eighteen months, maybe, uh, where they can live outside until they find something, makes sense to me. So ultimately, yes, uh, but with some allowance for a grace period. In terms of the salary, uh, range, I'm comfortable with what was proposed. We discussed it as part of the subcommittee. Um, and kind of went through that and, uh, uh, what was presented was what I think the subcommittee was was comfortable with, so.
I think maybe one of the things about talking, whether it's in the city or outside the city, might depend on how far outside the city. Um, so I don't know, I mean, if if you end up getting somebody that lives. Too far outside of the city, I don't want it to become something where, uh, maybe some of it can be. Uh, where a lot, some of the work would be done from home. Like that would want them to be.
Traffic through white fish from iron horses is pretty tough, so.
So, you you see what I'm saying, but it, I wouldn't want it to be a work-at-home type thing. So. If it's too far away, then that would be a possibility where, you know, let's say if they lived in Big Fork or something. To me, that, I think that might be too far, but I'm not necessarily saying I think they have to be in the city either.
Did you have something? Oh, I was seeing if you wanted something, I'm gonna, I'll I'll speak after.
I. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went through the discussion on the police chief and the fire chief, whether or not they had to live within the city. Did we not talk about if they lived within a twenty-minute drive? It could be in the county, but as they could be at the fire station within twenty minutes. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
There's a time constraint originally?
I think there was a time constraint for police officers originally. At this point, I'm pretty sure police and fire is just within the county.
Within the county. You know, what's fair for them, I think, should apply to the city management position. Just just my thought.
And don't forget that you're gonna negotiate a contract with your city manager and work-from-home type scenarios can absolutely be part of that contract.
So I guess if you're okay with it, I'm gonna make my statements. I I've I was torn on this. But I think it was something that we needed to have for a discussion, and that's why I wanted to have it brought up. Um, I do wholeheartedly agree that making them required just to live within the city. I think it would decrease the size of our pool that we could get, we could attract people to come here. But I also agree that most city manager type folks that are gonna be applying for this position. They kind of know that unwritten written rule that you should live within your city, right? Uh, so where I kind of come down on this after thinking about this is, I I actually agree with, uh, Councilman Graham. That maybe there should be a a distance around the city, you know, X number of miles, we can figure out what that is. Um, to say, you know, that you should live within this range and that within a certain timeframe, like you were saying. Uh, encouraged to live within the city. But I also go back to believe that. Uh, when we have an employee come to work here, they should be able to have a little bit of freedom to live inside the city or just outside the city too, so. That's kind of where where I have come down to on this.
Mr. Dowd?
Thanks. Um, I just think that it'll be. An interesting reception, uh, if the the person that we're choosing. Uh, doesn't have to pay, you know, water rates, sewer rates, uh, property tax. And even if you're renting an apartment, that's, um, you you're paying property tax. Now, I am okay with the grace period, because it it could take a while to find something that they want inside the city, but. Uh, I also want to remind everybody that we probably have a better housing situation than anywhere else in the valley right now, because we have been building. We have units coming online. Um, there, if you go look out there right now for rentals, there's actually rentals you can get. Uh, now, they might not be in the price range for service industry people, and we're we're gonna get there eventually. But right now, things are starting to turn around there. Um, I I, you know, I just feel it's really important that, uh. Because the city manager has so much leeway when they're, you know, talking to staff and they're gonna bring a proposal to the council. I want to make sure that, uh, any decisions that we ponder that out of the choices that they give us. It comes from a place where it's gonna actually affect, you know, you know, that person as well, so. Um, I don't know, I I I I'm still kind of stuck on that, uh, requirement. But I am totally willing to give the grace period, um, I think we talked on the committee about. Uh, twelve to eighteen months. Uh, I think twelve months is fine, but you know, I could go to eighteen. Pretty, my rent for my, you know, the place that I rent. Uh, includes the, um, the property tax as well. I mean, the the landlord's not just taking a hit on all that stuff, right? And I I don't, I mean, if there is one out there that's doing that, God bless him, but, uh. Uh, it's it's a, you know, that's their business.
Pretty soon we'll have council and mayor not having to live in the city. Yeah. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, you know, I'm I'm. We've, I've been through, I I lose track of how many city managers since I've been on, and it used to be a requirement. That they live in the city as well as, uh, the police and fire chiefs and. Um, I think it's actually more important for the police and fire chief to live in the city than the city manager from. The emergency standpoint. Um, it's just like doctors that work for Logan have to live. I I think they still do, have to live within so many minutes of of arriving. Um, at the hospital if they get called in on an emergency. So I don't think there's a whole lot of things. That constitute an emergency where the city manager needs to be arriving as much as they would with fire and police. That being said, we've allowed them to move outside the city limits and I don't see any reason why. Um, as much as I feel it's important and it it's. You know, their allegiance to the city and all of those things to make it a requirement, um, I don't know, it's 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 kind of. Kind of lost its necessity with me. Um. They get more points with me personally if they did, and I I respect them for doing it, but it is hard to find something in the city. It's getting easier, as Mr. Dowd said, but I just don't think we can require it for for this person. And not require it for the two that have to get into town on an emergency.
Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I just, and per, forgive me if my memory doesn't serve me well, but when we had that discussion on police and fire. Wasn't just for police or just for the chiefs, it was for all officers and firefighters. My understanding of the big motivation of that is we have folks on their salary having a hard time affording stuff in town. And that is getting hopefully better here. But a city manager has considerably greater income. Um, so I think that's less of a, less of an issue here than than just general police fire staff. That was my memory of the conversation.
I can go both, I mean, I can see both arguments, and I think part of the question you want to look at is, once you have your applicant pool, I think this is maybe one of those negotiable items. Because we might have an applicant walk in here and go, this is the experience is exactly what we all want. He has three horses, two cows, whatever. Where's the horse property in Kalispell? Where's this? Where's that? So I I think it's one of those items you look at and and you leave it as negotiable item with the individual. Because what I'm more concerned about is the individual.
Correct.
And getting the right team member in place versus, do they hit all the boxes? And, oh yeah, they're gonna live in the city, by the way, because. If I have three great applicants that I like, and all three of them go. Well, I have this requirement, this requirement, or this requirement that we can't meet within the city. And you watch three great candidates walk away that you would have loved to have had. Have we really cost the city potentially more? In qualifications, experience, et cetera, than in the requirement to pay seven thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. Just one of those thoughts. To me, I I think it's one of those items that you leave as a negotiable item in the, in what we put together. And that's part of the decision weighing process. I mean, as as Ms. Gabriel said, well, we got two candidates, I'm looking at, god, they're even. Yeah, this one said he'd live in the city, or she'd live in the city. Okay, that might carry a little bit more weight with some of this when we make a decision. But I think we just leave that as one of those negotiable items. To sit on a hard and fast policy like this, to me, it doesn't make sense at this point in time. Not knowing who the applicants are.
So Mayor, your consultant is asking for direction on how to get it out there and how to advertise it. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that what you're saying is, we leave it open.
Yeah, we leave it open. It's it's one of those items, it's open.
Note it as negotiable.
I I think it's.
How do you want it to read for the consultant?
I think it's open in the mindset.
You call it preferred.
But does that mean if we have a hard written policy on that, we need to change that policy to preferred?
I don't know if we have a hard written policy.
We have a city manager code that says that they must live.
So we have to change the code?
So we would change the code.
Okay.
But we can do that later.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, it.
I could, I could.
It's kind of one of those things, because I, like you, Mr. Dowd, I was like you for a long time. I'm going, well, if it didn't fit. Is it, is it really the right thing? And I've run into that hiring CEOs for companies in the past. Ah, this one thing to watch someone walk that has what you want, because you can't meet one requirement that really is. As you say, well, I want them paying the fees and things that we, well, we set policy, that's our job. And and whether or not the city manager pays the water rates, sewer rates, the real estate taxes. I mean, they, it, we're the ones who set those policies, set those rates, that's on us. And that's where, as representatives, yeah, we have to stand up to the public and we pay those same rates. But really, when we have a city manager, their job is to implement our policy. And I mean, I, I I'm just getting more comfortable with leaving it as an open item. That, you know what, I've got my preference, but I also understand. You know, there's different pegs for different sized holes and different shapes. And find one I want, I want to be able to hire that person. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, I mean, I think you make good points, and I'm comfortable with the preference language, but I will say that it is more than just the paying of the. The fee, it is that experience of living in the city and and experiencing the city as a resident. And experiencing the services and the stuff going on and and stuff. I mean, if, you know, we have debates about Kalispell crews, well, if you're. Go leave Friday nights and aren't in the city, maybe you don't have that, um, experience to kind of relate to some of the concerns there. That sort of thing, and that's not like somebody is not gonna hear about, but there is something different about actually living in the city. So I think there's value there, but.
But I would hazard a guess that not every council member has experienced Kalispell crews on a Friday.
Don't you think a person coming to work five days a week, you know, for eight to ten hours every day, isn't that enough experience of the city?
Not necessarily, not like, not not if, in the evenings, on weekends, you know, and the experience with garbage pu- pickup and. Um, you know, maintenance, you know, I mean, you'll you'll hear about it, but it is different when you experience it yourself at your own residence.
I would agree with that. You know what? I know there's things that happen around my office building at two AM I know nothing about, and I want to know nothing about. But I know exactly what happens between six thirty and four o'clock and around my office building.
Okay.
So, yeah, I get that point. Mr. Dowd?
Um, you you used, um, an interesting phrase when he said, uh, we set the policy and they implement the policy. They. They implement and enforce the policy. They're the boss of every department head. Um, so I just, you know. I I'm still kind of stuck on that, but I I do understand, you know, I'm in the minority here. I'm just, uh, letting you know. That, uh, I I think it's really important. I think that's why it's in the city manager, um, code in our. In our guidelines right now. Um, and I do think that we're gonna hear from a segment of the population. If we, if the city manager doesn't live among them.
No, we may very well. We may very well hear from the public if we hire a complete numskull, because they're the only one who would take the job.
In the city.
In the city. You know what? We live with those decisions every day, Mr. Dowd, that's what we sign up for.
There is a short time, short time gratitude.
I encourage that public comment. And I would hazard a guess that the the requirement is probably a. If we look historically, when we moved from the strong mayor former government to the city manager form, the weak mayor former government. We were trying to get citizen buy-in, or the count we, but prior council was trying to get citizen buy-in. Well, the mayor lives in the city. Used to do all the day-to-day business of the city. We moved to a city manager. There was some discomfort with moving to a city manager former government. Well, one of the requirements, maybe we should make him live in the city like the mayor does. So it was a kind of a hangover effect from that. You look at. What is that historical context of that, and is it still relevant today? Um, just one of those thoughts, as as you say, I, you know, a lot of different ways to look at this, so. But my hope is whoever applies, and we look at and talk with. No, I want to live in the city. I want to live where I work and not be twenty miles out. But if they got twenty head of cattle and four horses and, you know, thirteen kids and want to run a farm, I get that. Any other discussion on that? Clear as mud?
Clear as mud. Understood. Preference given to those?
Uh, I think we're all comfortable with the salary range that was presented, that that was.
Perfect, thank you.
Because that didn't include a raise for the council, right? And I'm comfortable with it. Thought I'd throw that out there one more time.
Gets old.
Any public comment? You're gonna have me, I'm gonna come back in every budget meeting. There better not be a raise for council in here. I'm gonna be like Dale Har. You guys can have a bake sale if you want a raise. Learn to plow your own roads. City manager report.
Mayor and Council, not a lot new to report. We do have at the next agenda, uh, lofty agenda coming up, so we'll have that. Uh, we will continue to work with the museum on putting, putting all that together, um, for a future meeting. Don't know exactly what timeline that'll be, and, uh, also. And, uh, also there will be as part of the third party analysis when we do get through that, um, which will be on the next gen as well. There will be a more detailed summary of how they go about business. I know Councilman Hunter, you had some questions on that. So some of your questions will, will be answered as, as you look at that when it comes forth and that's all I got.
Okay. Anything from council?
I'm going easy on you this weekend.
Good, good, it's simple.
You came in early?
Breaking stride. Anything from council? I've, cause I've just got two things. Um, one, I've alerted the city manager, we're gonna alert Public Works that I moved out to Silverbrook. So if we do get a snowstorm in November, December, uh, they're gonna have to get me into a meeting. Um, we might have to figure, I might be late because I heard that the roads are impassable and, and I might die out there. Uh, the second item, this is, uh, invitation I received. And I apologize to this young man because if I mispronounce his name, it's on me. But, um, Eagle Scout Award for Atreyu WJB Oxford is September thirteenth, this Saturday at four PM at Lone Sp- Lone Pine State Park. It's a pretty big honor to get that Eagle Scout, so I'm gonna try to attend at four o'clock. Just wanted to open that up to council if anyone was so inclined. Um, but I wanted to acknowledge that if I don't get out there, but this young man is, is noted and I appreciate the invitation, so. With that, oh, no, I get last word.
No, I want last word.
No, I, go fast.
Oh, please. Um, everybody probably saw that Mr. Dan Johns did pass away. And I, I am so glad we voted to name Kid Sports after him. So everybody just think of Dan John's family. So that's all. Thank you.
I will give you that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.